I know what's going on in your business and your life. All right, we are going to get started. We have one item on the agenda tonight for our council conference. And it is a discussion regarding the FYE 2021 Capital Improvements Program Budget and the FYE 2022 to 2025 Capital Improvements Plan. Mr. Francisco, are you going to kick us off tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Continuing the budget process for the budget that will start July 1st of 2020 and run through June 30th of 2021. So get your mouth forming that fiscal year 21, you know, we're into that process now.
Geez, I continue to age.
Funny, because I'm getting younger. Some of us are.
This is the first formal council meeting related to the fiscal 21 CIP and operating budget. The Finance Committee and the council in your retreat has already given some input into the budget, but this is the first normally scheduled meeting as part of the budget process. There'll be another capital budget hearing in February. And kind of the goal of this meeting is to get your direction on how you want us to shape that February hearing. The things you want to see included in the capital budget. We'll talk about some things that, you know, in order to get to this, we have to cut that. So just kind of where you would like to see priorities given as we move forward into that February meeting. I'm going to give some general background on the capital budget and the capital fund and the capital processes. I know that we have some new folks in the audience and some new council members. I know this may be some rehashing for a lot of you, but just bear with me and I'll try to move quickly. But the purpose of the capital improvement program is to support the services of the government. So these are buildings, streets, and those sorts of things that are provided to everybody. There are long-range master plans that give input into our capital budget and have for many years. The land use plan, the transportation plan, the greenways master plan, the parks master plan, so forth and so on, are all inputs into those capital projects that flow out from them. We set long-range and short-range priorities based on that council input that flows from those plans. The budget, however, is just that. It is a one-year adopted budget with funds appropriated for that one-year budget. And then there is a five-year plan that includes that budget. But the only things that have been legally appropriated are what you appropriate in that one-year budget. Once you have set that budget, you can make changes. Unlike a lot of the things that we do in the general fund where we are, you know, 80% of the general fund, as you know, is for people. But the capital fund, the capital projects, in many cases, take years to complete. So you can just say, we're not going to do that. We're not going to pave this street. And we're going to use that money for something else. You can certainly change the out-year plans in the five-year capital plan. And even when you haven't started a budget project, you can say, we're not going to do that project that we haven't actually contracted to do yet. In the capital fund, being in the capital program, there are some major sources of revenue. There are the enterprise revenues that feed into the capital projects that are paid for out of the water, wastewater, or water reclamation sanitation enterprises. There are voter-approved general obligation bond projects that are a major source of revenue for our capital program. And then there are some intergovernmental grants, and we get some donations from private sector sources to match our funds in the capital program. And in the capital fund itself, the major source of revenue is the 0.7% capital sales tax. I want to make sure that at this point in time, I have a moratorium and a ban on the term "capital penny."
I've never heard that term before.
I haven't heard that term, so you've done good.
Oh, you used to be aware. Yeah, there's no such thing as a capital penny. There is a 0.7% capital sales tax. So what is a capital project? By definition, a capital project is something that usually costs a lot of money, usually has a long useful life, and it's usually something that you can see and feel. It's a tangible asset, and it goes on to the city's fixed asset list for accounting It's something you can touch and feel. It's a building. It's a street. It's a bridge. And that's the difference between the operating budget and the capital budget. The maintenance of those facilities is usually on the operating side of the budget, but the actual physical facility is usually paid for out of the capital source of funds. That is distinguished from the capital outlay items that are also paid for out of the capital sales tax. Capital outlay items, by definition, have a shorter useful life, usually one to five years. They are such things as furniture, computers. They are physical assets that go on to our fixed asset list, but they are not high-dollar, $50,000, $100,000 bridges and streets and that sort of thing. And they are usually paid for out of the capital sales tax. There is some confusion sometimes when you look at our fund summaries because those capital outlay items are bought out of the fund from which the piece of equipment is going to be used. And when I say that they are paid for by the capital sales tax, the capital sales tax transfers money into the general fund or into the Westwood Fund, whatever fund the actual capital outlay item is going to be used, but it's paid for from the capital When we talk about the capital program, understand that we're not just talking about the capital fund. There are capital projects that are being paid for out of the public safety sales tax, sometimes out of the CDBG fund. You'll remember that we had a multimillion-dollar CDBG capital program when we had the emergency replacement of all the streets in the rural east side of Norman. So that was a CDBG-funded capital project.
And we so appreciate that. Now that it's done.
Thank your federal taxpayers. We have, within the room tax fund, the parks portion of the room tax fund is there to pay for park projects to develop our park system. We have, within the capital fund, both pay-as-you-go projects and general obligation bond-funded projects. It just so happens that we account for the general obligation bond projects within the capital fund. The Norman Forward Sales Tax Fund is a major capital fund. Those are capital projects that are being paid for with that dedicated Norman Forward Sales Tax. The University North Park TIF Fund is a capital fund. It is there to provide for publicly provided capital projects and infrastructure. The arterial road recoupment fund is in place, although it's been kind of dormant for the last several years. It is in place to provide for those capital projects on arterial roads and provide matching funds to upfront the cost of building those arterial roads in advance of the development of the adjoining properties.
I see you've already added the Public Transportation and Parking Fund, so that's nice to see. Councilmember Wilson?
Back to the UNP. I'm trying to formulate my question. If we were, if, once that UNP goes away and we reallocate, if I know I have things, funds, if we were to change project plan or something to that effect, does that go to the capital fund or does that go back to?
Okay, I want to make sure that you're making the distinction between this ending of the apportionment of sales tax going forward and property tax for that matter with the projects that are approved, okay? Because the approved projects would still be existing and accounted for in this TIF fund.
Yeah, no, I get that part. The part I'm wondering is if we were to remove projects from the plan?
If there were no projects, there would be no funds. So for example, there used to be a campus corner TIF fund. It was a capital fund. $1.25 million worth of capital projects were paid for. And once those projects were all completed and all paid for and all the money had been spent, that fund went away. Some point in the future, okay, when all of the authorized projects in University North Park have been paid for and all of the money has been spent, that fund will go away.
So I'm just saying, if we were to change the project plan in some way and there's extra money in that fund, the University North Park gets sitting there that's already been collected, there's magic that's happened, would that money go back to the capital fund?
It would go back to the various taxing jurisdictions.
Goes back to the taxing jurisdictions?
The sales tax would go to the general fund and the capital fund of the city.
Okay, that's what I was, I don't know why I got that.
The property taxes would go to the various property taxing jurisdictions.
Okay, I got that muddy in my head for some reason. Okay, thank you.
And then, as I mentioned, there are the enterprise funds, which, unlike the general fund, which is 80% people, the enterprise funds, for the most part, are like 70% capital. So they are capital funds in large part as well, although we're not going to really talk about them today. They have those large water treatment plant improvement projects and those sorts of things accounted for in those. All of the revenues in this budget related to capital are $238 million. And that includes the general obligation bonds and the revenue bonds, and includes the capital sales tax. It includes the user fee revenues and those enterprise projects. All of those capital projects that we're going into budget for spending money this year adds up to $238 million.
Councilmember Scott?
Is it possible to increase the sewer excise tax and, like, the random, the small fees here, like the community park fee? I guess the user fee's pretty big. And the...
The user fees, the sewer excise tax, general obligation bonds would require a vote of the people, but they could be increased with the approval of the voters.
Councilmember Petron?
The new development excise fund, that is an enterprise fund, can you explain how much is in that? What does it do?
It pays for expansion and improvements to the wastewater system, the water reclamation system. And it, by definition, is an enterprise fund that the revenue is coming from, that excise tax on new development. So it's $850 for a 1,200-square-foot house plus $2 per square foot above that. And then there's a different commercial rate for commercial projects.
So, follow-up, can you explain the difference between that and the, you said it's a water reclamation fund, so what?
Okay, the water reclamation fund are the user fees to the actual users of the system. So that's the sewer bill that you get, that our customers get once a month.
So the new development's like a one-time fee?
Yeah, the excise tax is a one-time charge on new development. The user fees are a monthly charge.
Okay. And what was the balance on that? I mean, you say percentages, but I'm wondering on the new development excise tax.
So as of the end of this year, we project that there'll be about a $9.5 million fund balance in the excise tax fund.
Thank you.
And again, it can only be used for projects to expand the sewer system.
Councilmember Bierman?
Would I be correct in assuming that as of January 1 of this year, this pie chart would look a lot different because of the transportation bonds? Are bonds taking up a larger percentage of our CIP fund? Or is it typically about 35%?
No, the transportation bonds are included in here. Remember that we budgeted for some of those expenditures this year.
Okay, so then maybe last, for last budget year, would this look different with not such a high percentage of bonds? Okay. I was basically, I was just...
I suspect that next year it'll look different because we budgeted for a lot more of those projects next year.
That was going to be my next question is, so then, as more of those projects come online, that bond percentage is going to grow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
So on the expense side, the largest areas of expense are what you would expect. Transportation projects that we just mentioned, water and water reclamation projects. We have the large water treatment plant project going on right now that's budgeted for. The buildings and ground piece this year is, in large part, the beautiful new library project that's paid for by Norman Ford is included in there. The park and recreation project, in large part, are also Norman Ford projects. So I think this should be fairly self-explanatory. But it's kind of interesting to see that, you know, there's 472 projects going on, some large, some small, but a lot of things are going on.
Yeah. Councilmember Scott?
On the previous slide, it was 35% come from bonds. That would be like our transportation bond?
Yes, that's almost all general obligation bonds.
And then on the expenses, it doesn't, does it, how does that balance out?
Okay, so the transportation bonds, general obligation bonds that the voters approved for street improvements, if you will, are being expended for transportation projects, street projects.
Right, so I guess transportation, because here in the expenses, it accounts for about 19%, so would some of it be going also to personnel, street maintenance?
Not, no. Almost all of that's going to be general obligation bond projects that cannot pay for personnel.
Okay. Thank you.
The capital improvements fund that is accounting for all of these things was established in 1976 when the voters approved that sales tax increase that dedicated the 0.7% for capital projects. The projects don't have a dedicated special revenue like the enterprise funds, and so they are in the enterprise funds funded with fees and charges. So that's the basic difference between what's in the general governmental capital fund and the separated enterprise funds for those capital projects. Again, the capital fund is funded primarily from the 70% of 1% sales tax, and the projects are for construction of those projects that are accounted for in the fund. Each year, when council considers how that 0.7% sales tax is going to be allocated in the capital fund, you set a guideline, and this guideline is we adopt it when you adopt the budget. It's just that, it's a general guideline. You can vary from this. A lot of times, you may say that, for example, one year you wanted to have more money allocated to fleet replacements. And so more money, a special fund was set up for fleet replacements. That existing facility maintenance category was new about six or seven years ago, but we had fallen way behind on maintaining our facilities, and the council wanted to dedicate some funds. So we reduced the amount of contingency from 8% to 7%, and we reduced the special project category and set up that 5% set aside by guideline for existing facility maintenance.
Councilmember Wilson?
On that 7% contingency, that's, you may have said this because I was focusing on reading it when you were saying it, so I'm sorry. That is for projects that are being built as an overage kind of safeguard?
Yeah, that's the fund balance, if you will.
Okay, so do we have, is there money in that? What's the balance of that? Do we know?
Well, the balance in that right now would be misleading because that includes general obligation bond projects. We'll talk about the amount that's available for new projects as we go along later.
Okay.
So, as we were just, that's a smooth segue. The amount that's available for new projects in this fiscal year is $661,000. You'll recall that council wanted to set aside any available for new projects this fiscal year in case we were not successful in getting federal allocations for the Robinson Crossroads I-35 project. And Sean may add to this, but I think we're fairly confident that those federal funds will be forthcoming, so you might want to consider those funds as available this fiscal year.
When will we have an answer from ACOG on that?
Around February and March, Mayor, where the call for projects is happening right now. The grant applications go in December 15th, and then it takes a couple of months for ACOG to process that and sort of compete with the other entities. About the end of February.
Thank you.
As of right now, as we're in this early stage of the fiscal year 21 budget, there's $2.66 million that is available for new projects. As we go along today, you'll see that a lot of that money is kind of spoken for, but that is not allocated right now in the capital plan. So while there may be some draws on it that council may consider to be a very high priority, when we come out of this meeting, we hope to have some direction on how you want to structure that budget and use that money as we go forward. And then the next fiscal year is about $3.5 million that the projects have not been identified I mentioned earlier that the fund balance in the capital fund would be a little misleading right now, misleadingly high because of the general obligation bond funds that are part of that fund balance. But where there are projects that are identified for those general obligation bonds in the future, council has discussed in the past that the amount of project costs outweighs the amount of general obligation bonds right now, primarily related to the 2012 general obligation bond program. The Public Works Department has a pretty detailed and useful plan for how they intend to address that in the future, but we just need to be aware that right now, the obligated cost for projects in the general obligation bond program outweighs the amount of general obligation bond proceeds that we have on hand.
Councilmember Wilson?
Can that be made up with new bonds?
If the voters approve them.
Well, let me say, can that be made up with the new bond that was recently approved? Transportation bond? No. I haven't seen it. You've got a peanut gallery behind you.
Okay, so just remember that when, when the voters approve a general obligation bond, by statute, the Oklahoma Bond Proceeds Act, you have to do the projects that you told the voters you were going to do before you can use those bond proceeds for anything else. So within the general obligation bond program, there are some of our projects that have come in under budget. So once those projects have been completed, yes, you can use those for other general obligation bond-related projects.
And that sets in the contingency fund?
And that's, that's kind of the, no. Not, but that's part of the, that's part of the plan that has been discussed with council for how you're going to address the overrun over here with a projected shortcoming over there, okay? You're spending less over here, you're going to move the money over there. The two projects that we're concerned about, that we have to find some money for, are the 24th East Project and the 34th Northwest Projects. Those are general obligation bond projects that were approved in 2012. Those are general obligation bond projects that were approved in 2012. That with all of the projects that were approved, those last two, there's not enough money to complete them. And so we're trying to find money from other projects to move forward so that we can complete those projects.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, I think, I don't, never mind. Sorry, I don't wanna bob down the meeting with my ramblings.
No such thing as bad rambling.
So just wait.
Oh, yeah.
So here are some projects that have been completed, are nearly complete this year. Council is aware of most of these. The James Garner Phase One project, the Acres and Garner intersection has been completed. Rock Creek Road from 24th Avenue to 60th Avenue has been completed. We have finished the third year of the total mass daily load compliance and monitoring study. Sidewalk and Trail Project on 24th Avenue Northeast is complete. We talked about the Disaster Recovery CDBG program, that's a $17 million program that has been completed. And then the West Main Street Bridge over the 10 Mile Flat Creek is nearly complete.
That was only $328,000?
Of capital fund.
That's that one project from the CDs that we got sued over?
Councilmember Patron?
So on that bridge project, did it end up being, since they ran so far over, are they getting that bonus from ACOG?
Councilmember Patron, this one is referring to what we call the Glenn Floyd Bridge, which is 10 Mile Flat Creek. This is a smaller bridge, about a mile west of the one that you're referring to.
We got a deal on a bridge.
You'll see this in a slide or two, the West Main Street Bridge, the $7 million bridge is not finished yet.
Yeah, $7 million, that sounds better. My question still stands. My question still stands, though, are they gonna get that?
We don't know that, I mean, the project hasn't been finished, but when it is, ACOG will count the days and factor in the weather days, and that'll be determined according to ODOT rules, not ACOG rules.
So here are some projects that are still underway this fiscal year. And this first one is, is a point of great discussion. The, the big facility to maintain the park maintenance facilities, the emergency vehicle facilities, and the transit facilities is under design. There is a $6 million budget that is coming from several sources. One of them is the public safety sales tax. One of them is public transit funds that we are hoping to get from the federal government that will return to the United States Treasury from the University of Oklahoma.
Do we have any updates on that?
I think maybe you should call- I imagine you might have some comments, I know we met with Congressman Coles, came here last week, and I think they're working as hard as any of the legislative teams to try to recover that, and had a good feeling about it, but, you know, we don't have anything to show for that yet.
I think my big fear is we've heard whispers of another government shutdown, which would be the same thing that delayed us last time. So what happens if we don't get that money? And so that's around three something million?
Yeah, we definitely need to move forward with the construction. The parks piece of that is coming from Norman Ford funds. So we would have to find about $3 million from somewhere within the capital program, probably. So again, that's a, that's of major concern. We're gonna have at the end here kind of a slide that talks about challenges and opportunities, but that's a big one. And just know that if we don't get those federal funds, we still have the great need to build that facility, and half the money is floating out there.
Are we hoping to, or if we need to, and I guess you have to build it for the size for the buses anyways, because I think we had talked about extending the lease with OU through the end of the year. Is that still on the table, or are we hoping we can get the $6 million and just build it and move everything out by the end of the year?
Appreciate that, Mayor. We're working on a lease extension right now, today, for June 30th to lease the remainder of the TOC from the university, but they have been pretty clear with us that they don't want to go beyond June 30th of 2020. So we're down to about seven months to get this thing built and occupied.
So our emergency vehicles and park vehicles can wait till the end of the fiscal year as well?
I think, well, I don't wanna speak for Judd, but again, the parks project is very, very important to your Norman Ford program because it's a domino issue. We've gotta get the parks maintenance facility out of Reeves Park, so Reeves Park project can move, do that, Griffin Park project can move, anyway, all those things have to happen. So don't want to minimize the importance or urgency of the park maintenance facility. Either we're trying to run them all together, is what we're trying to do.
Thank you for pointing that out. Councilmember Patron?
So 3 million is the transit hoping to come from the FTA. Can you break down the other parks versus emergency vehicle PSST?
The PSST part is about 800,000, and the parks part is about 2 million.
Okay, and that is the Reeves Park general maintenance?
Part of the Reeves Park project, yes.
I'm sorry, you said 3,800,000, and what was the norm for?
2 million, 2.2.
Thanks.
We have parking lots under construction.
You got something on the last one?
Oh, just, well, about the Aspen Avenue parking lot, actually.
Well, let him get there first.
Well, I don't know if it's just the whole slide, or we're gonna go to-
However you all want to discuss it is fine with me. The Aspen Avenue parking lot, I believe, is near completion. It's on Aspen and White Street, roughly. It's about $934,000 that came out of the capital fund. The Legacy Park parking lot is under construction. Did I pass over the question?
Just, yeah, that it was already, I mean, it looks like it's finished and been in option, I've been, I've used it several times already.
I think the kiosk to charge is not due.
Yeah, this is a mortgage thing, this is a land thing, but the parking lot's been done for months, there was about $150,000 to build the parking lot. This is land cost, which is about double this, about $2 million land acquisition, I think, for that person.
Okay.
So acquired from NDC.
Okay, thank you. And then you'd mentioned like the 24th Avenue project, we don't have enough money to finish it, but it's already started, right?
Yes.
It's going, so I wasn't sure how, not having enough money, but the project's already started and everything.
Yeah, where we don't have enough money is the 2012 general obligation bond program. It's just that those happen to be the last two projects, 24th Avenue and 36th Avenue. So what we're having to do is find money to close the gap in that overall 2012 program.
We went ahead and already started the 24th Avenue project.
And we have the money to do it, it's just, you know. At the end of the day, we need to find more money.
Councilmember Wilson?
Just to clarify that, that's about a, I'm gonna say 60% federally funded project, so we had to put our 40% up to match that, which was a really good deal for the city. So yes, that project is effectively paid for, money's in the bank, and it came in right about projected number. So frankly, the overrun here is all about Lindsay Street, sorry to bring that subject up again, but it was about a $10 million overrun on Lindsay Street. About $5 million of that came out of your bond program. So we're making up that $5 million with the other seven projects, essentially what we're doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
On the Aspen Avenue parking lot, what is the revenue on that? What's that looking like as, as far as the parking lot? What, I mean, I have no, no frame of reference for parking.
We're guessing over here, we're still kind of sort of getting a sense of that. Pretty low number so far, but I think our projection might have been somewhere around 100,000 a year if, if full.
That's its full swing.
When we projected that.
And then one more question about that. I know that we recently closed some streets down there, and are we charging those lifts and Uber and rideshare programs to be down there on, on that parking lot as they're waiting for their fares?
We are not, those are dedicated spaces, we're trying to get them off of the street and putting them in the parking lot.
Sure, no, I understand the reasoning, I just wasn't sure if we were charging them or not. Thank you.
The Fire Station 9 project is nearly complete. The comprehensive land use and transportation plan update, Ms. Hudson may have some information about that, but it is nearly complete. The West Main Street Bridge is the, is the project that Councilmember Patron was just asking about, and the 24th Avenue East project we've talked about. The 24th Avenue and T Drive intersection project is under construction, and the multimodal path on Highway 9 between 36th and 48th is also under construction.
Councilmember Wilson?
Multimodal path between 36th and 48th is under construction?
Under construction, will be.
Like designed part of construction?
FY 2021, this is the cost of that with, a lot of this, these dollars are federal dollars matched with, I think, 20% local.
Sure, so that 950 is federal?
About 70% of it is federal.
Okay, and then, I hate to ask for stuff, but can we get an entrance into the park from there somehow?
Into Saxon Park?
Just throw extra 20 or 30 bucks there and get me in.
Okay, I know the path is on the north side, it'll continue.
Well, right now, we have, we have it north, we have it along the north side, and then you can cross the street, but then you're kind of SOL right there. And I know that in the 36th Street widening, that that extra piece is there, but it just seems like there could be an entrance right there to the park.
You're talking there at 36th?
Yeah, right there, meaning you just drink.
Is that a Norman Ford?
We can work with our parks.
There's some Norman Ford already, yeah.
Okay.
We don't own the corner? We own the park? Somebody owns the corner?
Except for the corner.
Okay.
Charge a toll to get into the park.
It is a state highway.
We could work out an easement with the owner, just to have a-
The hardest part to get to.
Right there on the corner.
It's a state.
Oh, really?
Anyways, I'm gonna throw that out in every meeting, just-
So here are projects that are planned for construction next fiscal year, replacing the HVAC system at the Animal Welfare Center, municipal complex renovation that we've talked about, yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
That HVAC, and this may be, I maybe need to just talk to my public council member, but why, why can we not, that's five years old, was it, how old is that?
I have an answer, that's not a replacement.
It's actually underway now. We started on an emergency because we just keep dumping money into it. You will be seeing a ratification item coming forward in probably December meeting to ratify the contract that's already underway. You'll also be seeing a budget appropriation with that for about an additional $75,000.
Okay, I don't know if I understood all those words or not, but-
Do you want to know why this is happening? Why we're doing it in the first place?
Should we take it off?
No, it's not. It's because the system, that, like, this whole facility is located so close to the wastewater facility that it corroded.
But I don't know why that wasn't thought of in the beginning.
Yeah, it's not-
Just the wastewater, the urine and stuff inside the facility is corroding the internal parts, so-
It needs to be coated.
The wastewater piece is just one piece of it, it's, it's a dual thing, but-
I guess my question is, did they not know they were building out an animal care facility when they built it? I'm just wondering if we've pushed back on the contractor in any way?
Yes, we have, and that's dead.
Fair enough. I should probably go to some animal shelter. Sorry.
Municipal complex renovation is a general obligation bond funded project that will be moving forward next fiscal year. It's under design now. Talked about the 24th project, the legacy trail extension will be moving forward next fiscal year. The 36th Avenue project, the utility relocation piece of it, in anticipation of the federal funds will be moving forward next fiscal year. Council has long awaited the I-35 and Robinson Street project. You'll recall that the city, the local match of those funds, are TIF revenues, and this is the total cost of the project. 12th Avenue Northeast Interconnection will be moving forward next year. The Flood Avenue sidewalks-
Councilmember Holman?
Sorry, Almond. So it's the 24th Avenue East project and the 36th Avenue Northwest project are pretty similar type projects, they're both two-mile stretches of road, arterial road, a widening from two lanes to four lanes with bike lanes and continuous sidewalks. And it seems like to me that the East 24th project, geography-wise, is more complicated of a project, because it kind of dips down, and there's a neighborhood that's next to it. So I was just kind of wondering why the 36th Avenue project costs $3 million more than the 24th Avenue project.
There's, there's several reasons for that. Actually, there's a lot of interesting topography on both of them. We actually have a couple of large creek crossings we have to deal with, but in addition, we're building that intersection at Franklin, and those intersections themselves are almost $2 million.
And the ones that are already on these?
So that's a lot of the difference, whereas they're already constructed, we're only doing the one at Robinson on 24th. But when we go back, we're doing the other, we're doing Indian Hills and Franklin, and then we have a little bit larger brig structure, bridge structure we have to complete on that one, too. So that's really where you see a lot of the difference in the cost on the street.
Two intersections, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Councilmember Beerman?
Can you tell me a little bit about the 12th Ave traffic signal interconnect? What is it? Or someone, maybe not Anthony, but-
Yes, we currently have the traffic signals on 12th Avenue interconnected, we're just replacing the copper wire we're using for those communications with fiber optics. So we can bring that into the TMC whenever we do the TMC project.
And that will be the start of what will hopefully be a concerted effort to do this more thoroughly across the city. Cannot tell you how many people in Ward 1 would love to see these signals talk to each other a little bit better, so I'm very excited to see us starting with this.
I may, as we have about a dozen of those already with fiber optics, so we're well on our way. Interesting sidebar, the City of Edlin has a traffic management center, which we want to have, but they don't have interconnected signals, so they're kind of doing it backwards. When we get that TMC, we're gonna be ready to operate.
I was given a huge, long presentation, and I think if he had a PowerPoint, he would have given it to me at one of my residence houses, who is very focused on making sure that we have signals that talk to each other across the city so that he doesn't end up at red light after red light after red light after red light. So he's going to be thrilled to know that we're moving forward with this.
Councilmember Wilson?
I think I've asked this question before, but as it pertains to the fiber optic to all of the signals, I'm trying to say, do we, is, do we have, are these connected completely, and do we have redundant paths? And are there dark fibers on there that we could use or lease? And have we explored those kinds of-
Might be a better source, but again, we've got about 10 years of-
I know he and I have talked about it a little bit.
Doing it, we're trying to, as we move forward with them, we don't put small fibers in just for, you know, one back and forth communications. We'll put in 140 course strands because it's the largest you can go, and to utilize a dark fiber later for-
Do you have ring, it's ring and ring, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then another question is, have we looked at leasing those fibers, or is there a market for that?
We've, we've talked about that in the past, don't know if there's any takers at this point, but there's definitely opportunities coming up that we'll, we'll explore as they come along.
Okay, I like it.
A lot of this we do with federal funds, and that goes with some strings attached, which-
Oh, what kind of strings?
Could, could make that difficult, the leasing of the-
They won't let you re-lease it?
We'll have to pay it back. This project, this $293,000, that's 100% federal funds that are being utilized if we're not running.
Oh, okay, and so they won't let us lease the fibers?
It needs to be used for public infrastructure, not for private.
What if it, we did it with a public internet or Wi-Fi or something like that?
Something that we can explore, technically a better source than that.
All right, well, it sounds like a topic for another day, but it's going up.
We've been doing it for about 10 years, so we have redundant fiber connections all across, this is just one more mile or so.
Councilmember Holman?
Never mind, well, I think it's on here later, actually.
A lot of these projects will be discussed in some more detail later in the presentation, but any questions that you have, fire away.
I wanted to ask a question about Porter. So right now, if I'm correct, the Greyhound bus is right there at Porter and Acres?
No, it's moved back to Main Street.
Moved back, okay, because I was about to say- Moved back, okay, because I was about to say, and where on Main Street is it now?
Merkel or whatever that, where the Sinclair station is.
Same place it was.
Perfect, okay, never mind.
This is just a visual of some of the projects that are either ongoing or have been completed.
Where are my straps?
Interestingly, see a kind of a before and after look on Walnut Road and Studdman, but the tax money is being used wisely and for good purposes. Here is a visual of the 24th Avenue East project that is under construction, it is widening, as Councilman Mahoney talked about, new traffic signals at Meadowwood. Construction is underway and will be completed about nine to 10 months from now.
Councilmember Biermann?
So I, I thought that I was under the impression that there was not going to be a traffic signal at Meadowwood, and this is a very pleasant surprise that will make a lot of people very happy.
Clarify that, it will be signal-ready, but right now, it does not warrant a new signal. We also had to narrow up the road, go left turn lane there because of a land acquisition challenge. We chose not to buy the farm house from the family there.
Oh, right, okay, I do remember that.
We were about to buy our entire property to create a left turn lane, so we opted not to do that.
Okay.
So there will not be a left turn lane at that intersection, but it will be otherwise ready to accommodate a signal when the signal is warranted.
I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
Are we going to be changing the speed on the roadway in phase, I guess it's phase, no, yeah, phase one or phase two, I mean, they're both 40 miles an hour right now, but south of Lindsay, it's 45.
Right, typically not. We would typically, what would happen is, we would typically finish the project, do a speed study a few months later after the traffic has gotten used to it, and the speed study would dictate what the appropriate speed limit would be. It's exactly what happened south of Lindsay, and it went to 45 because that's what people were comfortable driving that section. So it's possible we could get to that here, I kind of doubt it, I suspect it's going to be 40 or 35, that's generally what we see in the more urban areas.
Well, I was going to suggest that, I would hope so, especially because if we're not going to be having dedicated turn lanes, and we're going to be forcing people to, you know, pull out in front of multiple lanes of traffic and not have, not have good points, that's what we have south of Lindsay. When you're heading south, I don't, I can't, I don't have as clear of a visual going north, but I know going south, if you're going to be turning left, there are left-hand turn lanes almost everywhere, I think maybe with the exception of the school.
We'll have these here on the major intersections, but not at the minor intersections.
Okay.
So, again, speed limit setting is really dictated by the driver, not so much as we just find out what they're comfortable driving at, and that establishes the speed limit. As I said, I suspect it's going to be in that 40, 35 range, that's generally what we see.
Thank you.
The 36th Avenue project is depicted here, as was mentioned, it is the construction of two new traffic interchanges, two miles of roadway, and this is a general obligation The magical I-35 and Robinson West Side project, all of our readiness points are pretty much in place, and we hope to get final approval of the federal matching money in the spring, and then move forward with the construction in the fall. These are, this is a depiction of the Highway Nine project, some that have been completed, some that are under construction, and some that are to be constructed in the future, but you see that the state does have a comprehensive plan for Highway Nine, and it is being executed.
Six lanes. I was just looking at that. Oh, east from I-35 to East 24th. Some crazy expensive.
Crazy expensive, I think is an understatement.
The Porter Avenue and Acres intersection that was mentioned is fully funded, valid 2019 general obligation bonds. It will be starting construction, I believe, next fall. It includes streetscape improvements and pedestrian and sidewalk improvements, and cul-de-sac ing some of the streets that are intersections now.
I really hate that cul-de-sac. It's a huge waste of space now. Its only purpose is for fire trucks to turn around.
The Jenkins Avenue project is part of the 2019 general obligation bond program. The interesting thing here to me is the connection of Imhoff Avenue with Constitution, that's a part of this project, and this is a matched funded project, but again, it will support both the new parking and residential structures that the university has constructed, as well as the new Reese Park complex.
Councilmember Wilson? What portion of dollars does the University of Oklahoma put into this project?
Towards the street project?
Zero. Just want to get that on the record.
If I can qualify that, but I want to point out a couple of things, I know you all know this, but a lot of moving parts here, so Senior Center here, new softball complex for the university here, realignment, I think the contribution of the university is going to be this land, which will be an issue for council to wrestle with this year. We can't do the realignment of the public road without them dedicating.
I was wondering about that.
Land right-of-way to the city, and that is what we're asking for the contribution to be, that they will work with us on swapping or dedicating.
It'd be really cool if they could put a bus barn down there for us.
I know, again, Judd can speak better, but the plans, the concept plans for the Senior Center are anticipating the use of this space in the future for growth, and so that would be really important that we get that dedicated to us as part of that transaction. So this will be another, kind of your next major land transaction with the University of Oklahoma.
We love those.
It'll happen this year, this has to happen this year, so the land issues will happen. And I know the softball complexes, they're anxious to get started, I don't know exactly the schedule, but there's a lot of things happening here in addition to a major, major road project.
So what happens to the little bit of Constitution and Imhoff that go away? Like, do you break it up and put dirt?
Absolutely, it'll be restored to green space, I don't know what the university would do with this space, it's actually going to be slid this way, but I'm guessing they would use that for some development. I know they've got some development plans in here as well. The city would use, hopefully, our portion for the Senior Center, and then, of course, what's left here, they might have an impact on a building, an old Navy building here. So, yes, the street will be removed, you won't ever see it again once the new alignment's in place.
Councilmember Holman?
Have we already started reaching out to the homes that front Jenkins to talk to the residents about?
Slowly, we, again, guys, we're very careful in doing that because of acquisition regulations, we don't want to get out too early. We're just back on your next agenda Tuesday. We have the engineering contracts in the Jenkins Avenue project, so we will begin the concept planning and land acquisition identification. Looks really good, we don't have a lot of properties to acquire, unfortunately, we've been able to kind of aggregate the right-of-way over the years.
I know there's a lot of room along there, but I have had at least one of those residents reach out, just asking if it's all going to be on the west side, or if it's going to be coming into their front yard or not, so.
Trees, lots of mature trees.
They voted for it, too, so they think it's needed, but they were, they've definitely been asking about where we're at, so.
Again, remember, this is totally funded with bond funds, so unlike the federal process, we're going to be moving very quickly here. This would normally be a three-to-five-year endeavor, we'll do it in a year and a half, that's pretty unusual. So we'll be talking to those folks about land issues, maybe this time next year.
But any issues will be coming through us and not through ODOT or anybody else? Any problems?
Our standards, our regulations, we do try to follow the Federal Acquisition Relocation Act, we think that's a really good piece of legislation to the extent that we can, so we sort of take the high road on that, we wouldn't have to, but we try to follow that regulation. It's really a fair policy to throw tips of land in terms of.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
So, Mr. O'Leary, we know that St. Thomas Moore is doing a big construction project, and they're pouring concrete for a new parking lot on the front side of the church. Is that curb line that they've poured kind of in the, what the future alignment will look like?
It's pretty close, thank you, sir, and again, this is a great example of development policy complementing projects like this. We're very closely with the churches, they were planning their site to dedicate enough right-of-way for our project, and to place their improvements in a way that we don't have to go back and tear it up later.
For Councilmember Holman's constituent, that opportunity to kind of get an eyeball of what that curb line's going to look like, like, indication of how much of the front yard it may take.
I will have to go check it out.
Moving to the public safety sales tax-funded capital projects, the emergency radio communication project is nearly complete. That was a $15 million project paid for from the public safety sales tax-backed revenue bonds. The design is complete for the emergency communications center on East Robinson, and we are into the third year of the fire apparatus replacement program. I was privileged to attend the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee meeting last week, when they were given an update on the design of the EOC building and the new estimated costs for that facility, and what they would have to cut back to get that project within its budget. That committee will be coming forward with a recommendation to council that some additional funds be identified to ensure that the, that the structure could be built at the level that would accommodate the personnel that's anticipated to be in that structure. And so that's an issue for council to consider, because with the existing budget, they're going to have to cut back the footprint of the building, and they don't want to do that. So that's just something for you to consider.
Councilmember Biermann?
So I have kind of a general question that relates to this, I don't really know any other way to say it, then, why does this keep happening? From Norman Forward to the PSST to, I mean, it just, I feel like there has to be something that we can learn about how we project budgets in the future when it comes to programs that we passed not very many years ago. I mean, I understand if it's something in the early 2000s, from, you know, 2005 to now, a lot of things change. How much has changed from 2015 to now, that our projections are so far off on some of these major programs? So I just, I, I don't know, I'm expressing frustration, I don't know if there's an easy answer or even a fast answer, but.
And I don't know if there is either, but I will say that more projects come in under budget than over budget, and I think our program managers do a really good job. It's just that what you all hear about are the ones that are over budget.
That is a very fair point.
Very fair.
I appreciate that perspective as well.
I always think it's the same thing.
I can speak to this because I was on the Public Safety Committee as this thing evolved. It's already been downsized significantly from what the original plans were, and the issue is now, will we have the right people there, as a minimum, to include the Transportation Control Center?
Yeah, and it's concerning to me, I want this facility to be what it's supposed to be, and I just, I just, I feel, I feel like this just keeps happening, although I do appreciate the perspective that it's actually not, it's just that we don't, we don't need to hear or spend a lot of mental energy on the ones that come in under budget, but it does concern me, and I know, I know that this is something that the public is concerned about, because we started to hear it kind of bubble up about transportation when it came to this new program, so I just, I just wanted to voice that, because I feel it, and it seems like it keeps happening, so.
I feel it as well.
I'm sure you do.
You know, when the project managers come to me with a project that's under budget, great, you know, and we move on, but when something is over budget and we have to identify additional funds, yes, that's additional work to do, additional work for council to consider. So, yes, it isn't a problem that we underestimate habitually, but it is a problem that when we underestimate, we have to find solutions.
And I want to be sure that you know that I don't, I don't feel that this is an issue with the project managers, I just feel like if we can do better on these projections, maybe we make the project manager's job a little bit easier, because I'm sure they would prefer to come in under budget more often than they go over budget. So I just want you to know, this has nothing to do with any, any feelings about the management of the projects, just that I don't want to be putting these project managers in this situation in the future if we can help it, so.
Their perspective, they're going to protect what they think is the minimum.
Right.
After literally years of evolution of this, and downsizing and downsizing, to the point where we gave it the office we can't, we don't think we can do anymore.
Right.
And still perform the function that this is designed to perform.
Councilmember Holman?
So, PSST has existed for 12 years, 11, 2014?
The original?
2007?
The original was 2007.
And then made permanent in 2014, and so it's a full percent, right?
What's it, it's half percent?
Half percent, and then, can you just, as a refresher for everyone, why is the PSST fund, I mean, we know of sales tax issues, but why is it?
That's the answer, remember, the public safety sales tax is a sales tax, and just like all the other sales taxes of the city, the sales tax rate of growth is slower than what has been projected. So that is the overriding concern for all the sales tax-funded projects in PSST, and in Norman Forward, and in the capital fund, it's all driven by sales tax, and we're dependent on sales tax for the capital funds of the city and the operating funds of the city to a great extent.
And would you say the EOC facility increasing, is it increasing in cost, or is it just we've had shorter sales tax, or is it both?
It's both. Again, the project managers and the PSST Oversight Committee have done a great job of trying to manage, and yes, there has been cutbacks both in the radio project and in the EOC project, and in the fire apparatus project. All of the critical capital needs projects have been under this cloud of the shortfall in the sales tax revenues, but we do want to make sure that we can deliver what was promised to voters when they approved the public safety sales tax, so, so that's just an issue for council to keep in mind.
And I have to interject on the question of fire, that Chief King has done an excellent job of essentially reprogramming out into the out-years the kind of apparatus that he needs, and actually has saved money from the original plan, and we think being more effective in the kind of apparatus we're buying, pump or tankers, for example, putting water east where it needs to be. So hats off to him.
And so here is that fire apparatus program as it has moved forward, and the pump or tankers that Councilman Muscana talks about. The fire apparatus program will continue with a budget of $750,000 in next fiscal year, and $800,000 the year after that. Moving on then to the Norman Forward program, the major projects that have been completed this fiscal year or will be completed before the end of this fiscal year are the Central Branch Library that we all know about, the Westwood Tennis Indoor Facility, the Prairie Creek Renovation Project, and the Songberg Park New Construction Project. There's a picture, a depiction of the Central Library Project and the Westwood Tennis Center Indoor Facility. Again, here we go, Councilmember Biermann, the Central Library Project is substantially under budget, Westwood Tennis Facility Project was substantially under budget. We have to consider and make do within that overall budget for Norman Forward, and to make sure that where we have some savings in one project, we're just delivering all of the projects instead of adding to any of them. Moving forward, and as we move forward into this fiscal year, we're going to be, and Judd can fill in a lot of blanks that, a lot of blanks that I cannot, but the Andrews Park Projects will be moving forward. As you know, the indoor aquatic facility and indoor multi-sport facilities are under design. The Griffin Park Project, the community sports project, and the Reese Park Project, and the Senior Center are under, are under design, most of them under one design contract. The extension of James Garner Avenue from Acres up to eventually the Flood is under design, yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Patrol?
I was going to ask Judd if we're going to see those design plans tomorrow, will the ad hoc committee get to see those?
Yes, they'll be revised, still conceptual, but there'll be some revised plans shown tomorrow for the Senior Center.
Can, well, for the aquatics and multi-sport facility?
I may have my days and stuff.
I thought aquatics was tomorrow.
The, I think you're right. I apologize. And yeah, we'll see a revised set of concepts.
Would you mind providing a printout, the larger printout like you did for council for, like Reeves, you know, the 11 by 17 so we can look at it?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Upcoming Norman Forward projects in next fiscal year are continuation of the Griffin Park Project, continuation of the neighborhood park projects. We will continue with the lease payments for the Griffin Park instead of purchasing as a lease, but we do have to budget for those lease payments each year. We had planned in the five-year plan to have the start of the new trail development at about $2.5 million next year. The asterisk there is going to be news to Judd, but that is one of the projects that, that I will probably be proposing in discussion with the Citizens Financial Oversight Board to push out into future years such that we will not have to debt finance so many projects, and we're hoping to save on some interest costs by pushing out some projects and make them pay-as-you-go projects instead of debt financed projects. Senior Wellness Center will be moving forward. You remember that it is a pay-as-you-go project, paid for over two and a half fiscal years, and the same with the Ruby Glan and Saxon Park Projects. So we have issues with Norman Forward as well. Norman Forward is a sales tax. So the overall sales tax revenues are coming in below what we originally projected when we set the budgets for all of those projects. So we are continuing to do a great job through those ad hoc committees, through the project managers, to try to make sure that projects come in at or below their budgets. And where we have some savings in one project, we hope to keep that into the fund balance so that we can pay for all of the projects as we move forward into the future. We are hoping to debt finance fewer projects because the rate of projects has been a little bit slower than we anticipated. So if we can debt finance less than we had projected, then we have to pay less interest going forward, and that's part of our plan to make up for the shortfall in sales tax revenues. We hope to get some supplemental funds through matching funds from the federal government for the James Garner Project. Council was in advanced discussions with getting some supplemental funds for the Indoor Aquatic Center and Indoor Multi-Sport Center from the University North Park TIF Fund. That would definitely help those projects. We hope to perhaps find other city funds if some of those shortfalls cannot be made up from other sources, and we hope to have some matching funds from, from private fundraising sources for playground facilities and that sort of thing as we move forward with the Norman Forward Program. Norman Forward also envisioned some operating costs for these expanded park facilities and the Senior Center to be paid for out of Norman Forward. Whether it be by delaying those costs or perhaps by having some of those costs absorbed within the general fund, we hope to save Norman Forward some of those costs to make up for that shortfall in sales tax revenues. But, but again, the discussion here is about the shortfall in the Norman Forward sales tax. But the discussion at the larger level is sales tax because it affects all of these capital programs that are dependent on sales tax, the public safety sales tax, Norman Forward sales tax, the TIF funded projects. Those are all indirectly or directly sales tax related. Just council, keep that in mind. That mega trend that we talked about a couple of years ago definitely hits home on these capital projects.
Councilmember Hol?
Can I go back to the Westwood Tennis Indoor Facility? Did you say that came in under budget?
No, the tennis facility came in over budget.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure.
A little wash.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Petrum?
What is the, how much are we upside down right now for projections on Norman Forward?
Right now, the sales tax for Norman Forward is about eight percent below the original target. So if that comes to pass, then we'd be about 12 and a half, 13 million dollars short at the end.
Okay. And for right now, that is, equates to how many dollars for today as a...
Yeah, about a third of the day. We're about a third of the way in, so. Moving then to...
Sorry, I thought maybe Allison had another question.
Councilmember Holman?
Do we know at this point, I think Judd is, is Judd somewhere? Okay, there's Judd. Do we know at this point what the Saxon Park development is going to look like or what we're planning on doing?
We do. We have a master plan that was adopted several years ago that we could share with you, but it's widely available. It's on our webpage and everything else, but we know that that's the plan.
And can you tell me, where did the fitness equipment come from that's out there right now?
What company?
Or like, what was the, kind of the genesis behind it? Or why?
It was always part of the plan to have that fitness trail over there. We actually got a recreational trail plant that paid for 80% of that project, put in the trail and the fitness equipment.
Are we doing any more of that?
In that park, not necessarily, but we are hoping and looking to do it in many neighborhood parks and...
Okay. Well, possibly as a part of this development, but definitely when we look to do this anywhere else. Have any of you actually used that equipment? Because I have, and I definitely don't want to do it more than once. It is very, very rough on the body. There is zero padding. I really appreciate the accessible one. I actually think that that one is actually the most usable for everyone. But I would strongly encourage if we're looking at doing this anywhere else to go up to Stars and Stripes Park in Oklahoma City and see the equipment that they have there because it's less impactful on the body.
That, the sort of first generation circuit training stuff that we have out there.
Okay.
Now they do parkour courses. They do sort of American Indian type courses. There's been a large leap in fitness equipment and outdoor stuff. That we kind of refer to jokingly as prison yard equipment. That's what was available back then, and that's what we bought.
Yeah.
So circuit training still is one vein of outdoor fitness equipment.
And it is absolutely weatherproof, and I get that, but it is not easy to use.
I mean, that's where you get the toughest.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I mean, and I don't, I certainly don't, I think there's still a place for circuit training. Just that particular equipment is really not one that I would want to use more than once. Like, I still have bruises from using it almost two weeks ago. Just pressure bruises from using the equipment as it's designed. It is not good for your elbows, back, tops of your knees, that kind of thing. So I would just encourage that maybe we look at a different brand or maybe some weatherproof rubber, you know, padding or something because that is tough equipment to use.
Councilwoman Wilson?
In the Saxon Park question, is it, I know I can go look on the website at the master plan, but are there bathrooms and facilities scheduled for that?
Yes.
And an entrance on the corner. Hate to be lazy, but going to the trail, but...
Lose control.
Free flowing discussion.
Sorry.
Moving on to the general obligation bond programs, and again, here is an area where we have predominantly savings. And this is where we would make up some of the costs of Lindsay Street if you overrun. So as these projects are completed, and remember that before you can use general obligation bonds for anything else, you have to complete the projects that the voters were promised. But once they have been completed, under the Bond Proceeds Act, you can use the proceeds for related projects. So these street projects are related to the 36th Avenue Northwest Widening Project, and so we can transfer some of these funds to make up the shortfall in those projects. And that's, that's the crux of the plan that I think the Public Works Department has.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Are you saying that there's $5 million in there?
About two is what we're projecting right now. It's a $25 million program, so we think we're going to come in about $2 million under.
Cool.
Yeah, the entire plan for how the shortfall from Lindsay Street would be made up was discussed with council about a year and a half ago, but we can certainly, we can certainly bring that back to the finance committee or wherever if you like. Here's the 2012 transportation program and those projects and their bond costs versus their actual cost and what the projects are as they're moving forward. But again, we're making very good progress with these projects, and again, I think the voters are getting what they asked for.
Councilmember Holman?
So we talk about project overruns. There's only one project on this list that has come in under budget, and that wasn't very much under budget. So, and some of them are significantly over outside of Lindsay Street. Is there some reasons?
Appreciate that, Councilor. I want to bring your attention to that little asterisk down there, "City share remain the same." And that's really the number we look at is the city share, the bond share. Did that remain the same? And in all projects, except Lindsay Street. And we should have had an asterisk here on the 24th Avenue East Project, even though that's a pretty good overrun, that the delta, the difference was paid for with utility funds. So thanks to our Norman Utility Authority for that. Did an enormous amount of waterline relocation work out there, so they paid the difference of that. So when you see that number of 14.9 million on 24th Avenue, goodness, three or four million of that was in utility relocation, and the rest was in roadwork. And those revenue sources from utilities are paying for the difference.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're doing really well with the exception of Lindsay Street. And again, the one that has yet to come in is 36. Feeling good about that? Have a taken this, won't take this for another year, so that'll be the last one to fill in.
And since it's been a while, would you just maybe briefly go over why the Lindsay Street project went over so significantly?
Yeah, majority of it had to do with a decision by ODOT. We originally had planned to run our drainage system, underground drainage system, collecting all the stormwater issues there in Lindsay Street directly out to the I-35 right away. That's how the project was built. That's what the voters voted for. And about our first year in the design, ODOT said we couldn't do that, even though they had sort of given us the green light on that. So we ended up having to bury about a mile and a half of enormous stormwater box culvert to the tune of about five to six million, somewhere in that range. The rest of it was in land acquisition. It had a lot more expensive properties to buy. What else am I missing?
The conduit that we built, put the comedy telecon to it, that we built, cost more than was expected. And then there are also some, when we were working with OG&E, there were some cost difference there that we didn't expect to that added up to a little bit more money, too.
Things, these are things that we struggled with at the time. And like Anthony said, we keep our eye on the ball here on delivering what the voters expected us to deliver. So there was, for instance, cutting back on the stormwater system on Lindsay Street was not something we were going to do. We just had to take the difference.
Councilwoman Wilson?
So I remember having discussions about audits on past projects, and sometimes they come in over and we get a refund or vice versa, whatever that, they decide that there's more costs that we need to, you know, pay for. Are these audited? Do we have plans in place?
I don't think any of them. I don't think any of these have come back through the ODOT audit process.
But they all will, right?
Lindsay Street has gone through a kind of a unique audit process, and we're really comfortable with that number. ODOT was concerned as well because it was so high, but none of the others have been audited. Not uncommon at all here in the city to have a dozen, 15 ODOT projects in the pipeline at any given time.
Well, if I remember correctly, it caused us a little budget problems a year or so ago.
Yeah, right.
And so what are we doing differently to accommodate that?
I appreciate that. One of the things that council did a few years ago is to set aside in this account, this Fund 50 capital fund, a, an overrun or a contingency account for those ODOT audits. You're putting about $100,000 a year in.
Oh, and each one of the projects?
That's really worked well.
A separate project just for them.
Just for that.
For all of them. So we know that they're going to come. You know, there's sometimes a major ODOT project, five to 10 years to get through the final audit process. So invariably, we're, we're sitting here with a council that wasn't even involved in Lindsay Street, and we get a bill for the Robinsons to get on the path. Kind of the way it goes. But I think council's done a really good job of providing for that whichever year it might happen.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Moving forward then to the 2019 general obligation bond projects, as has been discussed, the Jenkins Avenue and the Porter Avenue projects are totally city geo-bond funded projects, and so they'll be moving quickly as, as with the Constitution. This is a look at historically and moving forward into the future, those federal matching funds for transportation projects. And my colleague Angelo, who is retiring...
Hello. What?
Hello.
We didn't discuss this.
Did you get council approval for that?
I was just going to say deserves a round of applause and a great...
Well, that's true.
For this money coming in over the years, and, and we hope that it will continue in the future. But, but you see that this fiscal year was very low because of the formula change that they did, and not because of the, because the formula change that was implemented in the projects that we already had in the pipeline, we did not get very much federal matching money this fiscal year. But we hope to, to get a lot of federal matching money next fiscal year, particularly for that Robinson Crossroads Project, and I believe that's included here.
And that's... Councilwoman Wilson?
Am I understanding this correctly? This is because of that change with the, their, the sidewalks instead of...
Yes.
It had to do with a change in the ranking and rating process that ACOG put into place.
But they reversed that decision since?
They did. Want to give a lot of credit to the mayor who...
Good job, Mayor.
Got us over the finish line in a recent meeting at ACOG, which, which had to do with rewriting that ranking and rating process. But there was a few last minute changes that we were, we thought were very important to us. And I think she gets a lot of credit for getting the board at ACOG to approve those. So as we go into this call for projects right now, we're feeling really good about the numbers that are coming in on I-35, Robinson, James Garner, 36, and so on because of the work that we did this year.
Thank you.
That's right. It's my first ACOG meeting. Don't fix me, guys.
I think the city of Norman and the citizens of Norman were very foresighted when they dedicated that seven tenths of a percent of sales tax to capital projects. And the city administration, this well predates me or anyone else in the room, made a decision to set aside part of that capital sales tax for capital outlay items, primarily for vehicle replacements and equipment replacements and those sorts of things. This gives you a graphical depiction of how much we're spending on vehicle replacements on an annual basis, and on the average about $2, $2.2 million per year. But unfortunately, $2 million a year does not buy as much as it used to. So this year, we're replacing about 35 units. You see that in fiscal year 2017, that's the year that I was talking about, that council made a special allocation for fleet replacement as, as a result of the fleet study that had been done at that time. That fleet study said that we should be spending about $3.5 to $4 million per year on fleet replacements, and we're well short of that. And that was before we got into the business of replacing buses. So just know that this is an ongoing concern.
Councilwoman Petrum?
Thank you. Going into the next slide, maybe I'm jumping the gun a little bit, but I was hoping that maybe you could go ahead and tell us, just so I can sort it out in my brain, all of the different, where does the sales tax get divided to each fund? Like, can you, we have the room tax, we have the seven tenths...
The room tax is not a sales tax, but if, okay, so the sales tax, seven tenths of a percent goes to capital. 2.3% goes to general fund. One half percent goes to public safety sales tax, and one half percent goes to Norman Forward, and that's a temporary tax. Forward, and that's a temporary tax. But so total, it's about, that's, it's 4% total. As of April, there will be an additional one eighth of 1% that will go toward public transit.
Councilmember, you good?
Well, so the room tax, that's just for the hotels, I get that, but that is something that was passed at the ballot and my-
Yes, I believe in 1980 it originally passed.
And how much does that approximately bring in each year?
For the, there's a guideline for how those funds are used as well.
But just in code?
25% goes to this park portion, which is for park development projects, and that about is about $450,000 per year. 25% also goes to arts and humanities, and 50% goes to convention and visitors attraction.
And how much?
None of the, only the park portion is accounted for for capital fund.
Right, how much is the total revenue typically?
The total revenue is about 1.6 million, 1.5 million.
50% was visit Norman?
Yes. Total revenue is about 1.9 million.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Buses, and back to the city vehicle replacement program, of course, that's not accounted for in here, but will that actually go through this program?
That's a decision that we'll have to make.
Okay.
Where there might be some additional revenues available from the public transit sales tax, that might be one place that we could replace vehicles. But yes, this is also could go into the competition for generally governmental fleet replacements, so that's to be determined.
Sort of a follow-up, and it's maybe towards the bus topic. Have we thought about, and what are the problems with replacing those big buses with smaller buses? Is that like much smaller buses even?
Taylor's here, can speak there, and I can't, but I, we had a lot of discussion during the election on that, and there's a limit to how much smaller we can get and still accommodate.
And still get the-
Mobility devices, will there and so on. 30, 35 foot buses is pretty much the sweet spot, still a pretty large bus.
Is that what we have, what do we have now?
We have some 40s, we have some 35s, and we have some 30s, and so, but that's the big bus that you see on the fixed route.
Yeah.
Routes, and then we have the smaller buses typically on the parent transit routes. So, we are looking at all those efficiency gains, things we can do better and easier and cheaper with buses, but again, they're not getting any cheaper anymore than our passenger vehicles are.
Interesting.
I would say this, that there are some really great opportunities for grant matching in transit, particularly in buses or fleet. In fact, ironically, Angelo's working on one of the call for project applications is an application to buy a bus. Unfortunately, that application is going to compete with Robinson I-35 or James Garner or road projects. And so, we're going to have to kind of carefully decide which grant programs we want to apply for. FTA has some grant programs as well, so we're just now starting in that process of how we can generate some matching funds through our capital.
So, the, are you saying then that the bus grant to provide for that would compete with those stuff?
Yes.
Like it goes under a whole-
When they rewrote the ranking and rating process last year, they included transit as an option for the first time. They never allowed transit to compete. So, now, in fact, CUPPA, the Embark effectively, in Oklahoma City, got about a million dollars last year for a bus replacement, which took a million dollars away from our road projects.
Okay. Councilmember Bearman?
If I, Sean, if I recall though, didn't you say that, I think when we were talking about this the last, the last time, when the allocation had changed, and you had said historically, these smaller cost projects, like a $200,000 sidewalk project, or maybe a $250,000 matching grant for a bus? Are those items that kind of, yes, they compete in terms of the general total dollars, but they're sometimes a little easier to kind of squeeze in and fill in the gaps than if you're talking all three, seven, or 10 million dollar projects? So-
That's exactly right, and that's what happened.
Okay.
There was about, I think, five or 600,000 left over after all the big projects were ranked, and Oklahoma City said, yeah, we'll take it and we'll match the difference for the vessel. You're right, and we do that, too, on sidewalk projects. We'll do it now with buses and other things. So, yes, it's not all just a straight ranking and rating numbers game.
Okay, and I do have one follow-up, and this might have been a part of, Sean, this might also be for you. This might be kind of a reframing of Councilmember Wilson's question, because I was trying to formulate this while she was asking hers. Might there be any opportunities for us in fleet replacement to downgrade from one of the large buses to one of the smaller ones? Is that, was that your question?
That's my exact question.
It was, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
I was trying to think about that while you were talking, and so-
I think outside, she thinks inside.
Absolutely, that's right.
Okay, great.
You won't see us buying a bus until we've resolved some of those design issues and efficiency issues. We're also looking at alternative fuels, electric buses, CMG, and so on. So, we've got to consider all those options before we launch. But we, as you know, we have extraordinarily old fleet vehicles, and if you asked Embark, what their first priority was for us, it would be to replace those buses so they can count on them starting and operating like they're supposed to every day.
Thank you, and apologies for asking the question again. I apparently only have enough bandwidth to either listen or think about my question, and not both, so.
Same, I totally understand. I can't read and think about a question and ask it.
So, moving on to the room tax that was mentioned, the projects that are planned for the room tax portion next fiscal year, or cities matching fund for the Firehouse Arts Center addition, parking improvements at the historic museum, and just for your information, we have been paying about $200,000 a year out of this fund for the remaining debt service on the Westwood Golf Course bond, and those bonds will be paid off on June the 1st of 2022.
What was it per year, did you say?
About 200,000.
And if I might interject?
Councilmember Scanlon?
We have discussed here in study session, the notion that Airbnb is stealing revenue from this fund essentially, and we need to address that in some way, shape, or form.
Can we make them pay?
We will once we're in order.
Yeah, again, from the standpoint of being the defender of the city's tax money, yes, we could. And they agreed to allow to collect the room tax. But because the, in many cases, the Airbnb providers are operating illegally within residential zoning districts, I can't say pay me the room tax when you're saying that they're operating illegally, so.
Gotcha.
Kind of feel like that's how- Everything's connected.
So, within the capital fund, here are some projects coming up next fiscal year, the 36th Avenue project, the Porter Streetscape project, the Constitution project that we talked about, Jenkins project, and again, a lot of these are general obligation bond-funded projects, but just for your information, this is where the dirt will be flying next year. We have within the capital fund several recurring projects, and again, this is a decision that council re-adopts each year when you adopt the capital budget, whether you want to continue, for example, these sidewalk programs, but we are spending a lot of money for sidewalk programs now, and that has been given a very high priority by council within the capital program. We have some other recurring programs within those guidelines that you talked about, and if you follow those guidelines, this is how much would be allocated to those various areas in next fiscal year.
Oh, there's that ODOT.
Yeah, there's your $100,000 ODOT match.
Really apparent that I didn't read the stuff ahead of time, huh?
Councilmember Scanlon?
Notice on the, that slide, ADA compliance, yet isn't it a fact that some of these other sidewalk projects, almost by definition, will also accommodate some ADA compliance?
Yes, sir.
So, what's, what is this specifically for?
Again, Councilmember, this, we're not quite ready to ask for more, although this may come up in your February conversation. This was designed to accommodate the new ADA transition plan that we adopted, and, you know, this year we hired our ADA technician, Jack McMahon, for the first time. The projection in that transition plan, we would need about $500,000 a year to keep up with the modifications to buildings, sidewalks, traffic signals, you name it. So, we're not quite ready to put that number out there, but we hope this number will grow.
I just know that the sidewalk program itself, by definition, will correct some of the variances-
Absolutely.
...which is an ADA problem.
And many, appreciate that point, many of the projects that are in this program, this facility project will address ADA issues. Every building project you build addresses ADA issues, sidewalk, road projects, so we're doing it all the time. The ADA transition plan is very specific to existing parks and buildings that we still need to address.
I think part of that might be a little misleading, because that $100,000, Councilmember Scanlon, is for all of those categories, buildings, parks, and sidewalks.
Understand. I just saw an overlap, and I was curious.
So, here is a slide that kind of, in a summary form, discusses those challenges that we've talked about in some cases. The I-35 corridor study is something that we have not talked about, but as you know, that study has been ongoing for about two years now and is nearing its completion. At that point, we will have a recommendation from that study about the design of the Indian Hills interchange, whether there should be an interchange at Rock Creek Road or 34th Street and Moore. But that study will have great impact and input into our capital plans going forward. Council's very aware of the ERP project, ERP project that's going on now, we are in the midst of that. It was funded in the capital budget and has been paid for over the last three years. We are having great fun, right town. But I think that all of us who use the systems on a daily basis are very excited about where we're going. And yes, there are some growing pains getting there, but we're very excited about where we're going.
What are the challenges?
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm sorry, what are the challenges then with the website?
Related to that?
Yeah, money challenges or just emotional challenges?
No, not so much, yeah, no, just transitional challenges, yes.
We know what this process is like, so we sympathize with you.
Okay.
Council is aware of the regional transit authority plans that we're a part of, that's an issue that you need to have in your mind going forward. It has played itself out with the overwhelming voter support for the public transit sales tax, we're very excited about. So, on the operational side, we, we're as good as we can be, I'll put it that way. But we have some continuing challenges on the capital side related to our undertaking of that transit program. So, the bus facility we've talked about, we need to find money to build that bus maintenance facility. We hope and we assume that the funds will come in from the federal government, but if they don't, that's about a $3 million challenge that we have in the capital fund.
Councilmember Wilson?
I guess it's my day to ask questions, but so, if the regional transit comes down the pipe and passes regionally, does that, I know that we talked, we built in our transit funding with the eight cents sales tax for it to sunset if there's a new funding, but is it anticipated that that RTA would cover all costs for our local transit?
I would say it's hoped that it will, and that's all part of what the RTA and our representation on that committee is trying to figure out. You can imagine that the costs of that program are multiple millions, and our hope and our charge to them is that we think they should do all of it in that sales tax program, and that's what we said on the ballot, that if there's enough money to give us the 5.3 million we need to run the bus system, our 1/8 would be consumed in their sales tax initiative, which by any estimations today is somewhere between a half and 5/8 of a cent sales tax.
So, then a follow-up to that is, do, so, as we've done this transition of federal funds from OU to, back to the federal government, and hopefully back to us at some point, will we have to go through that same process again if we get a regional transit, like, oh, we've gotten these federal dollars, now we need to-
Hope not, and again, that was part of our reason for partnering with Embark.
You've got lots of hopes and wishes over there.
This is part of our message, and we think it was well received, is that we are building our transit system, our bus transit system around a regional model, which is why Embark is the perfect partner to have. So, we, no, we think that it will move very smoothly, probably more so for Norman and Oklahoma City than all the other four cities in the RTA.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Since I've been involved in the RTA for a number of years, I know in all the discussions I've ever been involved with about it, it's always been anticipated that it's a metropolitan bus system that serves Norman, Moore, Dell City, Midwest City, Edmund, and Oklahoma City, and other cities that may choose to want to come on board at a later date. But for sure, all those cities that have been involved since the beginning, the idea is that it is one bus system serves the entire metro area. So, that's always been the idea that I've been under the impression, is that the RTA is funding and providing public transit service for the entire metro. And I anticipate that means more than what we're currently doing in Norman, is what I envision, so.
I do. Fingers crossed.
Taking off my finance director hat for just a minute and putting on my frequent bus rider hat, I will say that I'm personally excited about where we're going with operating a bus system in this regional transit concept, because I know that Moore doesn't have a system. But I suspect that once they do, when they're part of the regional transit authority, buses that are right now passing through Moore but not stopping in Moore will need to be maintained. And so, that's why I would think that if we build our bus maintenance facility in the north part of Norman, the buses that are serving Moore would be maintained there. I get very frustrated on a frequent basis right now when I'm riding the Main Street bus and we have to get involved in that traffic on Jenkins and Brooks.
Yeah.
It would be much better if the city's bus system had a terminal downtown Norman. And so, that's, I personally stuck that bus transfer station bullet in there.
I was looking at that like, ah.
Anthony Francisco Transfer Station, naming rights, naming rights.
Councilmember Holman talked to me about this a while back as well, but I mean, again, just, the city owns property downtown that would make a very good transit station, we just paved some land that we have. I mean, but again, it would cut about 10 or 15 minutes off of those routes every day if we didn't have to go all the way down to Brook Street and for those lines that are serving the city. That's, okay, putting back on my finance director hat now.
Councilmember Wilson?
I have a question for the finance director, if he's in there. The bus maintenance facility and how that, I mean, I know that I'm asking questions that are, we don't know probably, but how would that, how would we recoup that cost if we become an RTA? Or do we recoup that cost? We just, now that becomes a-
Great question, but Anthony might have some thoughts. The point you just made is a good one, that that might become the regional maintenance facility for the bus portion of the regional transit.
But do we like sell that to the RTA?
Yeah, again, just as OU had to pay back money to the federal government for the federal funds that were provided for their maintenance facility, if the federal government provides us these funds for our maintenance facility and we start to maintain the buses for Moore, then yeah, I'm going to go to the city of Moore and say, look, guys, I mean, you know, why don't you guys pay us half a million dollars or something for the piece of our maintenance facility that is being provided to you? So, then, these are all future discussions that would be had, but the principle is the same.
Or would we then rent space to repair fire trucks? Because that's part of the rationalization for this thing now.
Cool, thank you, Anthony. Councilmember Holman?
I would just say, I would envision that the RTA would- I would just say, I would envision that the RTA would lease or purchase that facility from us and probably our, our transfer station downtown as well at that time. Because they will have bonding ability, they, I mean, they're a new governmental entity, basically.
The new traffic signals on state highways and city materials is a project that's coming up, just for your consideration. Council has had a great deal of discussion leading up to the Norman Regional Hospital system bond sale related to the potential purchase of city-owned property on the Porter campus in Norman Regional Hospital. And if they were to purchase that land, what would we do with those proceeds of that land sale? So that's again, something for council to consider. But remember, we've, we've talked about several areas of shortfall within our capital program. And I would suggest that that's one area that we might think about, okay? Just, there's several areas. I don't know how much land would be sold. I don't know how much money would come from the sale of the property. But just from the capital program standpoint, just keep in mind, we got three or four different things already to tick off, that that would be an ideal subject to, to use that, that, that money for.
Councillor Hall.
Do we have any new update on the Porter land number of acres?
The appraiser's working on that still. We'll check in and get with him this week.
Okay. Just keep asking.
I know. I've sent him all of what we show on GIS.
Okay.
Just waiting for confirmation.
Excellent. Thank you.
My question was similar. I was wondering if we were running title.
Yeah. Right now, the appraiser's looking at the tax records and trying to figure out how much, if what he shows matches our GIS maps. Our maps are based on the assessor's information, what I understand, so I suspect some more information. But once we can mount that up, I think that will be a little bit forward.
Speaking from experience, the assessor's office is wrong quite frequently. So I wondered if title was actually being pulled.
We talked about fleet replacement, but we did not talk about Fire Station Number 10, which is a future fire station that has been talked about by the fire chief that will be needed to serve the development in the general area of southeast Norman in the future. This is a discussion of the capital portion, which a source of funds would have to be identified. But just remember that there is an operational portion as well that would have to be considered. So, for example, with Fire Station Number Three, we did a general obligation bond issue to build the fire station. But you can't use general obligation bonds to staff the fire station. So those are, those are two different considerations for council to have in mind.
Councillor Holman.
I guess I would mention that Fire Station Three was a replacement, so we were just moving the staff, I guess, over from one to another. But I would, Chief King, if you would, part of the PSST, I think, was also to relocate Fire Station Five and bring it closer in. Is that more of a priority to you than is Fire Station Number Ten being developed? And I know Fire Station Ten perhaps was anticipated to be an area where we got an agreement on land in the Destin Landing Development, dedicated land for a fire station. So I wonder if you might talk about those things?
So Fire Station Five was mandated by the voters in public safety sales tax too. And it is to happen at the end of the apparatus placement program. So we're looking at 2025, 26, 27, somewhere in there. As compared to Fire Station Ten, you know, Ten, Ten is needed. And I, I, you know, both segments of our community would benefit from that. The issues that we face with Ten, obviously, that's a growing area of town down there, 36th and Highway Nine area. You've got Destin Landing somewhere out there, but you've got Bellatona right across the street that's blowing up. You've got the.
I know some of those.
It's slipping my mind now, the Mayo Training Facility, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Highway Nine itself, the Walmart, the Link's Apartments down there, all the development down Classen in that area. That's all serviced from our Fire Station Number Three, which fights to be our busiest fire station monthly as it is. So, you know, I mean, we're, we're making do, but, but that, that is an issue. And it's dragging down our response times and, you know, it's just a growing part of our community. It's a challenge also that area because Fire Station Number Nine has difficulty getting there. 36 doesn't come through, so they have to go to 24th, route to 48th and around, and it's just a very long response time.
24th doesn't go through and 36 doesn't go through. It's a real bad transit, transportation planning mistake on our part, I think.
So they're both needed and one is programmed right now. So we'll focus on that and then when we get the go-ahead and when we move forward Ten, we'll move forward. But yeah, the people are the great expense. You know, you're looking at $1.5 million-ish annually for those folks.
For new fire stations.
To open a fire station properly, so that's three shifts of five people.
And what you didn't say is there are insurance ramifications for coverage.
Well, and that's, yes, Councillor Scanlon, when we talk response times, that's factored in there. And so we, we look at areas that we're suffering in, that are already busy and have a lot of growth planned, and that's one of those areas.
Thank you, Chief.
Councillor Wilson.
Has there been any thought, talk or thought really put to now that we have a possible hospital slash emergency room going in Highway Nine? A joint effort in that area? Is that something that ever happens? Would that be something that we could do for Fire Station Ten? Just throwing that out there, everybody's looking at me confused, so. My next question is, I don't think that was a real question, other than?
They bought a lot of land, so there's room.
I mean, it seems like there's room. And it seems like there's something we could partner with. Just throwing that out there, you don't have to answer that. So my second question that I do want you to answer, though, is what, where in the busiest stations list does Station Five land generally?
Station Five would be near the bottom.
It's near the bottom?
Then we compete with Fire Station Six as our slowest stations.
And then what, I know that, it's so weird out there for me, like, I'm not even sure how it all works. We have a volunteer fire department out there as well, Little X. So do they go on every call? How does that work?
Well, they do now, well, they, on, on fire calls, yes. So we recently got a deal in place and it will help us on our ISO rating as well, but an automatic aid agreement with Little X. So historically, we've gone to help Little X on structure fires in their community. And they were always ready to come and help us, but we had really nothing formally in place, a mechanism to do that. We dispatch for them, so it makes it real handy. So I pursued an agreement that, that now states where they, if we have a fire all the way west to east 84th, they're bringing a tanker and an engine in.
Oh, okay.
So we're capturing that water, we're capturing those personnel, and that will help us on our next audit. But yeah, they, we have a great working relationship with them. They help us out on the lake, they have a boat that they deploy if we have a lake rescue that they can transport patients with. We have our smaller boats that we have, one at Station Six that we get on the lake with, but we can't transport people real well. So we work hand-in-hand with Little X and have a great relationship with them.
Yeah, I know, I know a few of those guys out there and they love y'all and back and forth, but.
They work well together.
One of the, I, I'm, I get real confused with Little X because most of Little X is within the city of Norman? Or?
Technically, no. It starts past our border at 180th. It's approximately, oh, eight-ish square miles. I've studied this some and it seems to go back when Norman annexed the land, when the lake was put in, I guess back in the 60s. The areas around where the lake is and east of there were known as Little X. And then folks that live out there today still refer to parts of Norman as Little X.
Okay, so I'm getting lost in folklore then?
They have their own defined area. And we, we both help each other. And I think now that we have this screen in place, we'll both benefit from, from working together.
So yeah, that was my question. Next is Little X a town?
School district.
School district.
No town hallship, no mayor.
Sorry for the weird question, just probably wrong.
Joint partnership, we're, we'll do whatever we're told. We're, we obviously work well with Norman Regional. If that's an option, we would look into that. We've proposed that as well when we relocate Station Five out east. So maybe looking at, maybe putting an ambulance bay in next to our fire station to increase transport, you know, capabilities out in that direction, reduce on same time, so that's.
Well, I know you're always thinking along those lines, because you and I have had conversations, but I, I get really scared when we all say that we're moving Fire Station Number Five in. Because, but if it's, I mean, obviously you've studied it and one of the lower volume stations, then.
The area we're looking at is around Clear Bay, the Clear Bay entrance, maybe where the old Staples used to be. So when it was voted on by, you know, back a few years ago, it was mandated that we move that closer to the population base of that district. And that gets it closer to where more people live in that area. But we want to be careful when we move it, that we're still keeping in mind where we're moving it from. So in that area, they can still get out of Highway Nine and zip up right back where they were near Little X High School, get out of 168, that area. And we want to minimize the impact of our response times where they currently are. But in essence, it helps more people in that area getting a closer look, all of us.
And just because somebody told me, and, or like a lot of someones have told me, the land is for sale next to Little X or the Station Five, not Little X, but there's land for sale next to Station Five right now, anybody wants to buy. I told him I'd tell you.
I will confirm that you did so. Councillor Member Carter.
I want to go back to the challenges of replacement buses. And isn't there, I thought we had a line item in our $5.2 million budget that allowed for annual replacements. What was that?
That is an allowed expense, yes.
Yeah.
It's right, that's right. So an allowed expense, Councillor. Again, the $5.3 million number has about a million in it right now for capital expenditures. And that should include buses, software, bus stop, you know.
So back to our current fiscal year budget, it's doubled the amount of the general fund appropriation, allocation for public transportation. If we are unable to fulfill that increase, it will directly, likely impact that replacement cost.
We need to find a way to do that.
So if we don't end the TIF, we're gonna lose $600,000 that we're gonna use for bus replacement, most likely. Thank you.
Okay, so just to summarize, those projects that I'm saying that we need money for, that we know we need money for, are kind of ticked off here. The bus maintenance facility, the senior center, the indoor aquatic center, multi-sport facility, the adult softball facility, and the EOC building, emergency operations center, that's not listed here. Another project that has been recently brought to, to our attention is this project for storm drainage in the Vineyard Edition that Sean may speak to. But that's just something, again, that's a challenge and something that needs to be addressed.
Councillor Scanlon is very close to this issue, but really not put there solely for his benefit. The Vineyard Storm Drainage Project, this is a, kind of an unfortunate story, but it's a repetitive flooding area. We've got damage to homes, including his, in this neighborhood. Last year, council asked us, at that, at that time, at the request of Councillor Clark, to design the solution to this problem using capital funds. We've done that. The solution is about a $600,000 project to rebuild their stormwater detention basin. But the $600,000 is not currently funded. It's also unique in that I don't believe this city has ever gone into a private development and spent money on their stormwater detention basin. Remember, in our stormwater proposal in April, we had a program designed to provide funding for helping neighborhoods. Well, that stormwater fee structure was not approved, so we, we don't have any money to help neighborhoods. This was one of those neighborhoods that we're going to help with that funding. So we wanted to put it on the list for you all to discuss, because the problem's not going away. The next major flood, there will be flooding of homes in that area. God forbid it's Councillor Scanlon's house. But we know that this is a problem. That neighborhood, we met with them about a month ago, we met with the HOA, described the solution. Carrie Evenson is our program manager, has done a great job with that. We know what to do. We know how to fix it, but it's a $600,000 problem that is not in your current program.
Councillor Wilson.
I don't know how delicately to say this, so why is the developer not paying this? Ooh, it's, it's a.
It's a 25-year-old developer's, the, the, the HOA is the only source to pay for this.
If I may.
Councillor Scanlon.
A couple of factors. And Sean just alluded, the, the original developer is long gone. The current developer, Curtis McCarty, has divorced himself from this, as has the HOA, because the, the, the design fix for this is on private land. The HOA has no access to it, no obligation, nothing. The, the reason that this exists in the first place, and you can agree or disagree, but, but the engineering design criteria used to plat, permit, approve this situation back in the day, in, in the words of Meschick engineers who have gone back and looked at this, Meschick is a contractor that does stormwater stuff for, for the city. Their feeling is that the, the design criteria that were applied were inadequate to describe what's happened. And, and so we, and there are seven houses specifically afflicted by this, we have no recourse, not to the HOA, not to the guy who privately owns the fund. The recourse we have is through the city, because the city has an easement on this property. In terms of funding sources, again, the HOA feels no obligation because it's not their land. They have no legal recourse at all, one way or the other. I'm in a situation, and I, I should probably sit back here in the audience to give this speech, but I'm in.
Could you do what Anthony did, just switch your hats?
I'm in a situation of having no place to turn. Inadequate EDCs applied in the permit process, ex post facto, it's nobody's fault, but it happened. I, as a homeowner, should have every right to expect that the permit process in this city protects me from this kind of stuff, and it didn't. And, and so where do I turn but crying on your shoulders about this particular project? I, I can personally tell you, I have a house I can't sell. It's not worth what I owe on it. I've already sunk $41,000 of personal funds after insurance to fix up stuff, and I don't know how many more of these floods I can stand. And my flood insurance premium went from $400 to $200 a year, and I just paid it for this next year. Merry Christmas. So I'm frustrated.
Oh, yeah, that's what.
And I'm, I'm in this situation, not because of anybody in this room, but because something didn't happen or happened erroneously in 1999 when these properties were planted. And I'm stuck. We are stuck.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Bearman.
I don't think anyone could sympathize with you more than the resident who lives in my neighborhood and also has a house that they cannot sell. They're flooded, they're almost uninsurable at this point, because they are right at the foot of a high-hazard dam that is leaking. How many thousands of cars travel down Alameda every single day? And every time it rains heavily, I pray that my HOA president and one other person is there that has the key to lower the level.
Your point is well taken in that this project was on the list of projects to be accomplished if the stormwater bond had passed. And it was fairly high on the list. And the reason was not only property value, property damage, but it was public safety in that when it rains, it pours. And Porter, at times, is impassable, as is the main road into the Vineyard because of water overwhelming. High, high center vehicles can't get in. So it's, and I will tell you that if a little kid stood on my back porch in one of these episodes and they fell off the porch, they'd be washed away, because the torrent is that significant.
All right. So I'm just gonna throw this out there. We're talking about how you can't hire people with capital funds. We're talking about how you can't hire people with capital funds, and that's what kind of got us into this situation where we can't create a stormwater utility, because I believe it was in the seventies where we had, correct me if I'm wrong, staff who knows the story better than I do, where we use federal funds instead of buying equipment and infrastructure, we hired people. And then when the funding went away, we jacked up the water rates, and that's what caused the residents to amend our city charter.
Hank Nixon.
Yeah, here we are, what?
That's what it was.
Like forty years later, figuring out how to solve major infrastructure problems in stormwater, because we can't... Just thought I'd mention that historical fact in case you were wondering.
Councilmember Petron.
While we're talking about potential ward-specific capital projects, one in Ward Seven with the people getting stuck waiting on the train really bothers me, and I wonder how much that one would be, and I also wonder how much that one would be for the Summit Lakes issue. Can we kind of have a discussion, how much is, do you know how much that one?
Sean, I'm sure knows.
Like, right around seven hundred thousand.
That's what I thought.
Right. And the Ward Seven, people stuck behind the train that can't get M stat?
I need to follow up with the council. We found in our research after the committee met and the residents were here, we found an easement that is existing between their subdivision and Cobblestone Creek Edition. So they've got the space to build an access road into that, and we'd like to meet with them and discuss that. It's a two-hundred-foot-long private road. It's a, it's a kick, it's not a big dollar issue. I think the two neighborhoods are going to have to work out their differences and be able to allow each other to use their road system, but there is a back way out of that area that doesn't cross the tracks.
Excellent. Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I was hoping to have a follow-up on that, C P T in December. We're going to cancel C P T next week because it's on Thanksgiving Day, and then basically have one in December that is November, December, C P T.
On the thirteenth.
On the thirteenth of December, so I'm hoping to have a follow-up.
Friday, Friday, the thirteenth.
And thank you for looking over that. Thanks for asking.
One other challenge that's not on this slide, we are finding in our journey for this renovation of this municipal complex, that they, it is going to cost a lot more than what we have in bond funds to pay for that.
Do you see, this is my shocked face?
So there's, of course, we're working with two thousand eight dollars, so it will, obviously, it doesn't all happen at the same time. It phases in, you know, and one building has to domino, and so there will be opportunities to add monies into the budget in coming years to try to accommodate that, but it, it is pretty significant, and so that will also be a challenge that we're dealing with.
Thank you.
That is old, by the way.
I do, I do understand that. Two thousand and eight, there's a lot that changed between then and now.
Okay, so that kind of ends the formal presentation. As we move forward, we will take the input that we've gotten here tonight, as well as input that we'll get going forward in Finance Committee, or just emails that you want to send to staff, or to the city manager, build that into the next presentation related to the capital budget, hopefully addressing some of these needs that, and challenges we know that we have within the capital program, present them to council in February, and then let you say, yes, do this, no, don't do that, and then come back with the final capital budget April the twenty-first.
Anthony, I have a quick question. As we continue to keep our eye on Ready for One Hundred and those goals, would solar panels and whatnot for existing city facilities, as we can put them on, fall under capital improvement?
They could. Either on an individual project basis, solar panel project, or as you're doing existing facility maintenance projects, or building construction projects, making that part of those construction projects themselves, so...
Well, my thought was for ones that don't have construction associated with it. And then you may have read in today's transcript that the agreement between O E C and Norman Public Schools has gone through, and what they're going to do with their solar garden could potentially cover thirty percent of their energy costs. And so I guess this is more, we've talked about potentially doing something at the water reclamation facility, and I'd like to continue to explore that with O E C, because parts of our facilities are in O E C, and that's one of them, and that one's got some green space that I think we could be utilizing to help with our Ready for One Hundred goals and come back on our energy bills, so...
Meeting with Patrick Grace tomorrow.
Did everyone hear that? Meeting with Patrick Grace tomorrow.
Oh, good.
I love it. We're becoming linked. I like it. Councilmember Petron.
And I was just reminded, if we could put a placeholder to talk about for council as well, for potential homeless shelter, whatever capital expenditures and outlay expenses that would go along with a day shelter slash emergency warming shelter for next year, not this season, I was guessing seventy-five thousand as a placeholder.
We, we've discussed this at the homeless task force. And, and primary focus now is, is getting the library, the old library, ready to use as a warming center. But the long-term solution, we think, is some kind of a day shelter that would exist and provide services for the homeless, someplace besides the library for them to go to, which is what they do today.
Have they mentioned in that committee, it's, I think it's S R O, but it's obviously not what we think of when we say S R O. It's like short-term rental, and it's almost like a dorm size, and there's potential land coming up, and that's actually, like, the tiny houses at Food and Shelter don't count as housed, believe it or not.
Michelle Evans is, works that very closely.
Yeah, and so this type of facility would, and if we can find land, that would be something I'd be interested in pursuing.
We're thinking about looking for existing buildings within Norman that could be converted. And, and if we have a day shelter, simply by hiring more security during the winter months, we can convert that into a warming center as well. In other words, they could stay there overnight.
Sounds good.
Just know there'll be some capital expenses.
Yep.
But a placeholder for something like that would be helpful in next year's budget.
All right. Any other comments before we close out? So reminder, Councilman Bierman?
Sorry, I was trying to get up in my seat. This is something for Sean. My hope is, if we could look at, there are, in the older part of Ward One, kind of down around Sunrise and that area, most of the curbs have, I would say, not even no A D A accessibility. It's almost like they didn't want people on the sidewalks. I mean, it's like this tall, you have to like rock climb up it to get on there, and who brought it up to me was actually a woman with triplets. She was like, do you know how heavy a stroller is with triplets? Trying to get them up and down the curbs. It's awful. And so it's just one of those things, I know, I know, you've got to eat the elephant one bite at a time, but that's an area where it is really problematic, not just, not just there's no A D A accessibility, it is, it is a cliff to get on and off of it. So just something, if there is ever just a small amount of money that's left over from a sidewalk project, I feel like that's the kind of thing that is pretty easy to take care of. It might be able to go under A D A compliance, might be able to go under somewhere else, but it would serve multiple purposes. Even, even kids on bikes, biking across streets, yeah, I just feel like there's a big safety risk there with not having really any easy accessibility onto the sidewalk at all in those areas.
I may put a plug in. Anthony showed a slide that we didn't dwell on much, but it's the twenty sixteen street maintenance bond program. This council's going to need to think about the next five-year street maintenance bond program about this time next year, and that's the kind of work that we could do in a street maintenance bond program in a much larger scale, focus on those needs.
Excellent. All right, Councilmember Holman.
Just one project, we've talked about it before, and it's the Brooks and Classen, the railroad crossing right there.
All of the railroad crossings, they're all terrible.
Right. This one, though, because Constitution is funded through a bond project that voters approve, Brook Street right there will be the only urban railroad crossing in Norman that has no pedestrian, there's no sidewalk to go across the tracks.
You have a new one there, Councilor, if you check it out on the north side, it was just built by the apartment company.
Does it stop at the tracks, though? Doesn't go across the tracks.
Goes across the channel, not across the big apartment.
Right. So from Classen to the tracks.
We do have a project right now, there's money in the current budget. We're looking at that right now. The constraint we're having getting across right now is actually, the new design that they've created, the V N S F that we have to construct, is very cost prohibitive, and we're trying to find ways to work with them, and we're trying to work with V N S F. We actually have contact with them, and we are working on that project right now.
And I was just thinking that in terms of the Classen sidewalk project that we're already going to be doing through there, and so, but yeah, that just will be the, since voters approved the Constitution, that one will be the last crossing in the city area that has no pedestrian crossing. Thank you.
All right. Keep in mind that February eighteen, twenty twenty, will be discussion, continued discussion on proposed new projects, so if you have a ward meeting between now and then, that would be a great time to get feedback from constituents on things we can pitch without getting their hopes up for a large amount of money we probably don't have to spend on them, but it's good to get the feedback so we can get it on the radar.
Grab some stop signs, that's all we need.
There you go. All right, this meeting is adjourned.
You're a simple people, Anthony.
I know, we are simple.